I had to, I had to do the Zoom option today.
Fair enough.
Okay, we should call and you call field meeting order and then I'll do attendance.
Okay. Folks, we're gonna call the meeting order because, you know, it'd be obvious. So, uh, would you like to, uh, go to attendance?
Catherine Zemeckis, yes. Nick Webb.
Here.
Bertram Schmitz. Lawrence Willett.
Yeah.
Mark Giaccone.
Here.
John Yulat, Joan Yulati.
Here.
Mary Jo Phelps.
Here.
Okay, everybody's present.
Excellent. Well, thanks, Lucas. This, uh, first of attendance is, uh, scheduled. Um, so, uh, for the meeting order, uh, first order of business is to remove approved December sixes, uh, regular meeting notes for minutes. So moved. So we had Mary Jo and, uh, or all in favor? Well, hang on, is there even a special? All in favor? Close this. Good. But see, we're getting removed this thing quick. Uh, anyway, thanks everybody for coming. Uh, welcome to twenty twenty four. I hope everybody had a really good Christmas break. We have a guest that would like to perhaps share something?
Yes, very quickly. So I'm with Land Trust. Some of you already know that. If you don't, I am. In two thousand nineteen, we partnered with Madison Land Trust. We put on the Wild and Scenic Film Festival as a fundraiser. It was extremely successful. So we got all excited and started to do it for twenty twenty, eventually.
Yeah.
And then that he came to the speech and all, we did it virtually. And we still had very good, very good results. Um, we made a lot of money, but we just thought that our, for what we're looking for, we were really more of a person to person. Everybody missed the reception. They missed the handphone and all that. So we didn't do it for a couple of years and now I'm bringing it back. Um, so I just wanted to have everybody put in their computer or in their, if you like, a meeting wake on the calendar. May fourth, save the date. Here in the town hall, we are putting it on again. Um, and how it works is the Wild and Scenic Film Company partners with national, they're from the West Coast. All the progressive filmmakers seem to be on the West Coast. But anyway, they partner with, with national sponsors and a couple of, national film editing companies. And they get films in from literally all over the world. And they can be from a minute and a half to two meter, twenty minutes. And I'll send you a package with sometimes they're three, between five hundred films to be able to watch. It's crazy. But they give you a spreadsheet of, with a short description. So you can kind of eliminate ones that don't pertain to your topic. So you're not, but all, but some of them, I mean, if you have time, it's definitely worthwhile because they're amazing films, a lot of them. We are not politically needy at all. We stay away from the local ones. We try to choose ones. But anyway, um, so we knew all of these actually, we didn't lose many of these until we created them on our own spreadsheet because they're nearly ready. And we fight about every one. We don't fail them together. Make the, we have a reception from like six to seven and then through seven. So, uh, uh, you know, we try and get like almost an hour's worth of films in and then we have an intermission. And then we have about another forty-five minutes worth of films after that. And then everybody goes in there like. But, um, the reception is a lot of fun. We have one of the national sponsors that is here about our building company. They, in the past, have sent us a full load of beer. And then we have Shabard, um, Kane and Ford. And they had really good turnout. We had the Lion's Glory and Farmage did amazing platter flora, not a tree, but I mean, we get sponsors, just many sponsors as we can. So that's how it works. So I have your, you know, and I have this digitally. So I could.
You can send it to me and I will share it up.
Because I, you know, I never, but it's an introductory letter on the front and on the back, there are four sponsorship levels. But we did three of them. It's varied. Um, the catalyst is four thousand, lender is fifteen hundred, and organizer is five hundred, and the support is two fifty. And these people get perks. They get free tickets and tons of ad license. So after you choose the films, it's really cool. I don't know if any of you saw the person. But like your, your sponsors are in the film. They look like you're at the movies and you're seeing them go by like the producer. So you'll have Short TV, you'll have, uh, Morgan Stanley, you'll have all these people that you know, and they're up there on the big screen looking like movie personality. It was pretty cool. They get a ton of, of ad license on the website. It's every night. So, that being said, I wanted all of you to be aware of what we're doing, know the dates, understand what we're trying to pull off here. Because all of this money goes to what the land trust does, which is in return, I'll be right back on it. What you are trying to do, helps us purchase money, helps us, and helps us purchase property and helps us continue our educational programs that we have. Uh, so way to approach something, if you're talking about, if you, if you kind of know somebody. You know, and it's a fundraiser, you need your money, you say it's an investment model. Yes. There's a lot of different ways to put it out there. There's a lot of companies go, oh, you know, we did Terry, you're not much budget for, then for fundraising, but you have to approach, you have all the right budgets for everything. What about your other budgets? This is, this is the multi overall thing. So. We're going to talk. What's the favorite game these days?
Strongest game. May the fourth.
May the fourth. That's right. Um, yeah, you know, the next thing, we'll just keep partying in the aisles.
Okay.
We'll just continue the growing right over.
And it, it can be here.
In our, who are you?
Okay.
Yeah, it, um, the first time we did it, it came through the Blue Bay just, we have a production manager who, they boost the sales in that bottom right and it's all amazing. This time it's actually not even a Blue Bay, it's. The fun comes to the end. But I'm sure it will be best as, I mean, fair, it was like you were sitting in an IMAX theater, those things. So. Working out.
Nothing. It's time for me to open the new page as well.
Talk it up, talk it up, talk it up. Last year, I mean, we had, uh, like.
What are the tickets for?
It's either, hopefully they're probably going to, so either one of our websites, either the Clint Land Trust or the Madison Land Trust, we had a lot of them for the ticket. Um, I think it'll probably be the beginning of February starting. They are thirty-five dollars, which is. I'm just, we're going to suck, so they won't be there. We've been, we've finished our lot. Hot quarters, eight dollars for a small box. And I'm thinking, we should, we should.
I heard for the thirty-five bucks, we got a whole bunch of good stuff.
But anyway, but let's say there's still that wider information, where information about this.
Should be in some of the.
Okay. We have a couple of letters, but with the, uh.
And we'll get all that.
You know, plus if you just go on either foot foot and land trust has, uh, lots of the ordinance.
Right. I have all of them.
Yeah. Actually, those people, working people is amazing. I mean, the graphics, the person who is on the committee that does the graphics for us. We would have to raise a whole lot more money if we had to pay someone. She does, she, she's very good. So, um, yeah, they gotta move.
So you were doing this with the Madison Land Trust again?
Yeah.
And, and I just wanted to say the previous events, like this is great because they bring a lot of people who are environmentally focused from many towns into the town to attend this event. And then during the, uh, the sessions downstairs, um, at the breaks, when you go down, you have the wine and cheese where we have an opportunity to meet these other people. So it's a great opportunity for the Conservation Commission, um, and, uh, you know, conservationist network and, uh.
The tickets also through event running and it tracks everything. And the last two that we had, we, we had ticket sales of like thirty-five thousand. So it's big.
So where was I going on the way to study?
It's not there yet. It's not there yet. It's, it's in the works. Um, probably by next week, there'll be only running on both those things. But we've got to, I remember a couple of.
I just wanted to mention, uh, as far as a sponsor, we might have one that provide to, uh, we have a national representative, uh, recently, uh, amateur flying. I'm actually flying, uh, riders, probably the Jackson family, which they probably even wanted, uh, even want to get them to have some of this. Um, he's only lives in us, uh, Clinton. And, uh, he did an event for another, shows you, uh, and I'm sure he's gonna get involved in that. I'll have him contact.
Yeah, I would appreciate anything, anybody could use our name. Uh, I was amazed at how people were like, yeah, I want to be part of this. I mean, I wasn't twisting any arms. It was, it was great. We made our land trust, we had more sponsors and Madison had more ticket sales. But it came out just about fifty-fifty. And we split it right down the middle and each, each land trust walked right within seventy-nine thousand bucks.
Wow.
It can't, yeah, you can't shoot that at that. That's my shield. I'm sticking to it.
Okay, well, thank you.
Get home with you.
All right, same here.
All right, um, so on to the main event. Um, so Pollinator Pathway Project, I don't think we've got a lot of, uh, moves, the only thing I would say right now, if anybody wants to plant seeds in, you know, the type of two meter bottles, uh, you know, that, you can do that. And I've got plenty of, uh, pollinator seed in like some of those. So you put a, I don't know, but you keep them over, you overland them. And there's a whole process where you cut the pot in half and put it in the soil, you put it in the sage, you take up the bottles, you can leave them outside. But they, they get whatever the freezing that you need. And I have, uh, a interesting number of seeds that I collected from all of our plants that we've got in Pollinator Pathway. So I'm very happy to share those with anybody. It's interesting to do.
But right around, I don't buy plastic water, soda bottles or anything like that, but I imagine there are lots of different things you can use.
Well, I used to keep litter bottles the other year and it didn't work as well because they weren't as clear as we.
Oh, so you're.
What?
Just by reading those type of.
Yeah, it's kind of like a break. Um, it's literally hands off until the spring. You just put them in, you know, you put in some water in the soil and then tape it all back up, cap it up and it rolls for two or three months.
Okay, so what I wanted to know is I, I never heard back from Sherry Smith about information about getting the pollinator garden ready and spring. And people get over.
Things are a little lacking in that one, you should. So we can get people.
No, what I'm saying is I'm asking for some information so that I can post it on Facebook.
I have them.
It's appropriate. And I thought nothing. And I want to.
Well, I mean, it's what I. Okay, great. Yeah, we need more help. So I will talk to them and make sure that we put something together. I was, part of the problem is we don't have like anybody to go. His issue, but we should put something together and get it out on Facebook.
I just, you know, I mean, I can take Jem on the information off the internet. And I want people to be involved in this program.
Right.
And, uh.
That was great.
It's about every. Start your card, begin your card comment while that kind of stuff.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask you, okay, too, that now like on the sunblock, as we go, it's too.
It's outside. Goes outside. Yeah, even now.
They have to go to the.
Say after we're over.
Oh, okay.
But it's better to put them outside.
Just with the cap on.
Yeah, with the cap. I have no idea where I'm, I've got a wallet on and I've got the seeds. I'll bring them next month.
Okay, good.
Could be fun. A little project for you all. Um, residential feed composting. We're now up to five hundred pounds a week, which is good. Not great, but good.
Oh, okay. Do we have a graph on that? I remember.
I got the data. I haven't put it into a graph.
Oh, because Abby said that she was gonna.
She asked me to write something up for the website and I did.
Oh, okay.
And so, but, you know, to do that, I reached out to Todd, that's the latest data.
Okay.
And it's up to five hundred, so.
That's really good.
Yeah. Well, it's not good. I mean, I want it to be a couple of tons.
Yeah.
A week. That's where I'm really.
Is it growing?
It is, but it's kind of like, you know, it's gone on chat in the house kind of plateauing. Yeah.
I don't know what we're doing. Speed and I grew. That's what I'm. Get a shot out there.
It does. And every time I go to the, you know, I take it once a week to the dump. And anytime I see people just throwing stuff into the thing, I was like, hey, you know, you can put some in here. So it, you know, just, the people going to the dump are your best customers, so.
Right.
Anyway, so that's what I've got on.
Well, we need a lot more people than.
We do.
Isn't it just like, somebody told me it's like six hundred, five or six hundred people, um, every weekend?
Yeah.
That's leaves a lot of people.
There's a lot of people, but I still think that's pretty good.
Yeah. Well, actually, some people to the top quote. Now, I hope that we only get, so if you think about it, I probably put in about ten, twelve pounds every week. So there's forty plus.
Except I could recycle.
It was five hundred pounds.
My last puppy, who scratched the dog's garbage.
Oh, my God.
Yeah.
So I, we, we can get into it's battery or, or promotion or exciting, uh, because I don't want it to stay. So.
Right. Oh, let's get it.
Since the game reduced the dump are the best customers, uh, maybe we could post at that shack at the front end of the dump, a little post. Yeah, we had that earlier, it was a couple of weeks.
Oh, we did.
We did. And then, uh, I remember Catherine and MJ with the, the, the.
The best.
The back, we were out there talking. If we're doing again in the spring, I don't want them to.
Okay. Before it gets too hot.
Yeah.
You know?
So, and yeah, no, it's, I, I mean, it's worth talking to them and see if we can get it on. Yeah. So.
Yes.
So that is food waste. Uh, Japanese, not really, nothing going on now. Now I don't believe anybody. No. Open space, oh, um, we're still putting on hold that open space, uh, subcommittee.
Oh.
Um, that's to rewrite some rules and things like that because we've got a subcommittee online that we. So I think we can skip right over that for now. Library, I've got some bad news on that. I went to check the camera out this weekend so I could dig the juice and push it up some more. And they couldn't find it. And it wasn't checked out. So they said it wasn't that long. So I've written to the library. Said, what's going on? Um, and I'll find out what's happening.
Did you talk to Mary Beth?
I haven't talked to Mary Beth, but I will.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so that's kind of distressing.
Yeah, because I tried to find it on their website.
I couldn't find it.
And you went to that part, you talked about something.
Library of things.
Library of things. It wasn't on there. There was no mention of it there either.
Well, it's funny because when I talked to somebody, I talked to, I think it was Sarah. And she said, oh, yeah, it's gonna check out four or five times. But she was reporting to the goal code and not being able to wait. So, uh, I don't think they ever read cameras. So not great that they can't find it. Anyway, we'll get to the bottom of it and hopefully it'll get fixed. Part of the problem now is it's designed to go on iPhones that are fourteen and older. Obviously iPhone fifteen, because it's a different player. So that's kind of a, right, well.
They have all of the first.
Well, they have, that's what.
Starting with fifteen.
Starting with fifteen. So, um, unfortunately, we're, we're in the hard ages. So, um, so that's food of mine. Then in terms of new business, I brought up last month, high school rats. And so I did a little investigation and it seems like it's part of the downtown revitalization plan, or at least talking to bike rags. So that would be good. Um, and so I think we should let them run with it rather than us run with it because the funding and the.
Who's doing it?
Um, I want to talk to Dave Teske and find out who's actually at the bottom, but it is part of the downtown revitalization. Yeah, I, I still, I think they're, now, it was the original downtown revitalization, which was like ten years ago. During Lily Richards' ratification, which occurred, it went on for five years and added it, it was a conceptual design for them. And we had, we had gotten state federal funding based upon that, right? You know, certain portions of it. But now what they're doing is they're, they're restarting another subcommittee. I think they're gonna build on that to, to take this revitalization a step further. I understand they're under the process of putting together. I don't really. Yeah, they have a submit together. So, so I think there's some funding behind it and, you know, so I will find out exactly what's going on. Report it back, but I think the good news is somebody, another community is actually getting the bike rags. Which I think is great. To me, I, I want, uh, downtown planning to be a bike rags road. You know, you can bike in or walk in and walk the town. I think that would be really nice.
Yeah.
As opposed, you know, there's supposed to park and all that, so.
Are they thinking of the right wing? There's just not, no unfortunate.
Wasn't there a committee that was working on, on pushing bikes when you.
Yeah, in, uh, bicycle industry in Atlanta.
That's right.
Yeah. And what happened? Because Candace Carrie Allen, Carrie Albrecht, but I don't know.
Uh.
Yeah, Carrie's.
Oh, she doesn't?
I think so. I think I, I still see her riding sometimes. But yeah, Rita Foster was on it. She doesn't care anymore. So, um, yeah, I, I think once that thing kind of fell through with the property they were hoping to connect.
The Mark Richards property.
Um, what's that?
It's the Mark Richards property. He is a.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, he thought they.
He's a very big brother.
Then they did. So, so it's trying to give bikes, obviously, an alternate route past Route One, because in Clinton, Route One has no marches, origins for everything.
They think, um, so.
And they want to turn that onto Madison's ringway as well. So.
Right, right.
I mean, it would be wonderful for the town.
It would. It's just one part that you just can't have to worry about that.
Well, the, the problem is the downtown is the most narrow section of Route One and they're trying to. Like they happen to find an alternative route.
Exactly.
So.
I just drive a little bit, I do a lot. I just drive down Route One all the time, right in the middle of traffic. So that should really go. You gotta follow the drive because that's all. Stop at your red lights. You can sit over here if you wish and bring another chair. Take that one.
The lights. Um, so that's the bike racks. Um, does anybody have any additions for the next meeting?
So we watched how much stuff we get involved in, what's our, um, regardless. Just. Things that can be far out, but I don't know whether that fight off or. Is anybody on that? Yes, I think, well, uh, Brett is still there, you know, Brett and. Two people.
Yeah, they've expanded.
Oh, they have. Okay.
I gave them a couple of. I gave them a couple.
Right, okay.
Well, the big elephant in the room as far as one thing we couldn't wrestle with, although I think it's bigger than us and might be more properly done at a regional codwell for the town is, um, gosh, Brazil.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, there is.
There was a team on Monday I was supposed to be at, but I couldn't do it. It was one o'clock in the afternoon and I had to be someplace else. I'm hoping that I can get a minute.
I don't understand why they do afternoon meetings.
I got two blocks today.
Yeah. Well, like I said, I was supposed to.
And so I'm hoping.
I mean.
Was it to have time?
It's deep due awesome to come a smear and charge, but, um, if there's a separate subcommittee board then, and it's regional. So the, yeah, all the way to Old City. So.
Because they just kind of a, uh, uh, they just had some sort of workshop or whatever a couple of months ago, a public thing, where people came to enter and addressed any issue that they noticed in their neighborhood or on their street or in their area. They didn't find that. And so I don't think, I believe they showed up to that. They didn't, they didn't do that.
Yeah. So, uh, I think actually the one on Monday is supposed to present some results from whole service. So maybe we should get our hands on that. If I get the notes on it, I'll circulate it.
Please. I'm very sorry I missed it, but I didn't get there a lot.
Yeah, no, no worries. Um, so we're now, any correspondence?
Yes, we can have a few things on correspondence.
Okay.
You know, just catch up to you guys here. I have to check, um. Yes.
That's good.
Um, November twenty-seventh, we got our annual letter from Connecticut River Coastal Conservation District. It went to Mr. Geldof, town manager, with a copy to, uh, you and me.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, their, their fiscal year twenty-five, the request is at the same level as last year. Uh, based on town per capita, it's two thousand eighty-six dollars. They would like to, for the town to consider sending to them.
And we did.
We sent fifty, but that was for this fiscal year. This is their.
For that year.
For, because it's budget season.
Right, right.
So.
What's the name of the group yet?
It's Connecticut River Coastal Conservation District. So we got that. Um, I did send you, uh, I forwarded you, um, it goes along with their letter request, their year end donation. It just says different things that they did throughout the year. I forwarded to, um, I think I forwarded to you.
I think I'm.
Yeah. Uh, what I didn't print out, I just, I've been out of the office. I'm only back at work now, um, for a while. The cause annual meeting, we just got notification. It's gonna be in March and I think it's the first Saturday. It's in person and it's in Southington. And, um, I'll be sending you out what I just got. It just came in my email this week. So I'll forward it to you. Um, it's an all-day seminar. They have different speakers. Um, looking briefly, I know they're gonna have something about open space, act land. Um, being lieu of open space is one of the topics that are gonna be taken up. Um, I think there might be something on Bernal Pools, but I'll forward it to you guys. And, um, if you want to go, um, you know, generally the town will pay for one. But I'll forward it to you guys and, um, if you wanna go, um, you know, generally the town will pay for one. Um, the chairman and one person and anybody else can go at their own cost. Um, we are a member of cause. I have to do the, um, membership form, but I'll do that ready. The fee, I believe, for the annual meeting is seventy five dollars. For membership, for members.
So, yeah, I mean, I support anybody that can go there.
It's a, it's a bit of, bit of a drag.
I think I saw it on a date that I was on vacation, so I may not have made it, so.
Did I say something? Can I mention Southberry?
You did say something, Southberry.
It is Southberry, I'm sorry.
And what's the date again?
Um.
It's early March.
It's early March.
Thank you.
What do you have seen in Luba? Did we ever have to go on water side playing there? You got it for me in Luba.
Yeah.
You did? Oh. Uh, playing in John, who they found, uh, as a condition of their approval for those some vision. And they just wanted to wait on habits, so.
We're gonna get them back.
We did, we got funny.
We're gonna spend like fees.
Uh, they had to do that, uh, this fall. I forgot exactly when. It was in this fall.
So that might be, I was seeing two hour offers for open space. Yeah.
How much?
Well, we're now in the thirties.
I think it was something for this, for the water side lane, um, trying to remember. But I think it was something like. And they said, they said it was gonna be about twenty nine.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So we're in the thirties, just have a little opportunity. No, last week, we were at sixteen hour.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's good. Which, by the way, is a race.
We're here. Are you ready for it?
We're here. All right. All right. A lot's going on, so you're gonna fill in my. So, we called the word of the joint land acquisitions subcommittee.
Um, Mike Hood.
President.
My.
Stigleyum.
Stigleyum, just Stigleyum, Mike C. And Nick Webb. Uh, Barry Willett.
Yeah.
Uh, Marjorie Cohn.
Yep.
Okay, that's it.
That's it.
That's it.
So once again, perfect attendance. We're on roll cast, uh, that's good news. Uh, so first order of the subcommittee is to review and approve. The, uh, minutes from the last meeting. Um, can I get a motion to approve those meeting notes? Motion to approve.
That was my question.
Okay, second. All right, so there are any doubts from Marjorie. Um, any, uh.
Discussion.
Any discussion points? Okay, then all in favor.
Right.
Opposed? If both of yours. Okay. So, well, did we? Talk about the meeting with, I think we did last time, so.
Yes.
They did provide the funding. The three thousand dollars. That check was cut the very next day and provided to the land trust, so that money already in our hands. And going, which is in the land trust since. They, they, so they mailed up.
Well, no, no.
No, I believe it's.
Just waiting for somebody to get out here. Yeah, I, I thought she was gonna try to get out tonight.
Uh, she, uh, was unable to come in person and she hasn't been able to call in yet.
Right, yeah, um. And we'll get her involved tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just don't hurry on that, because the fact that the bookie praiser and reviewer are very expensive for. Um, their fees are not due until after they complete their.
That's great, yeah.
So we don't really have a need for opinion of.
Until they get it in.
And also we're gonna get a check. CLCC as well, right? So I spoke with Ja, Darko, the CLCC. And today, actually. It, they wrote, tell me that our application had been accepted. Uh, he said that the check half of the amount. Is, is coming. So I called him today. I said, do you have any idea? He goes, I've mailed it out. We should have it on Friday.
And that's from whom?
A CLCC that, uh, we did, uh, Connecticut Land Conservation Council.
Connecticut Land Conservation Council.
Yeah, there was a grant that they were offering for.
That's the grant.
Cost. So when do you get the back? You know. I don't. But I, I'm guessing it's when.
The work's done.
Appraisers are done and then, you know, you've got. That.
What amount they approved was the one hand.
Well, twelve hundred.
Twelve hundred. This is different than the transaction statement.
This is totally different, yes. So the CLCC. And what's great about working with them is they'll approve up to twenty grand in pre acquisition costs. So, you know, the fact that they approved the first foray, yeah, it's really gonna set a, a next precedent so you don't get the rest of that money. Um. And you second move directly to the CLCT? Yeah, I'm gonna tell Sally to start by the. Right. Um. No, Mark, is there any progress to report with the property?
No, actually, I need, I still need to drop the email. And run it by everyone and send it out. But I, I was, I was actually hoping to get more clarity on what exactly has been approved and all that tonight. You know, like, it's a little difficult to hear you guys, by the way. It's kinda echoey in that room. But, uh.
I talk louder than for you.
I can hear you pretty well, but it's on the other side there. It's a little bit hard to hear like Mike.
Oh.
A little bit.
All right, no, so I, I have not contacted the owner at all. Let's put it that way. And I, I was hoping tonight to understand what to report to them. On the, on, in terms of. What funding got approved for what step and all that? I, I don't have a, I don't have a firm grasp on that, basically.
Okay, um, well, I'll start with, the first thing is we got a grant for, um, CLCC. Connecticut Land Conservation Council. For twenty four hundred dollars for pre acquisition costs. That pays the. It helps to pay for the appraisers. We also, but the nice thing is by working with them, there's more money in that pot. As we progress through this process. Um, you know, we'll have more expenses and they've got more money for us to go after. So that was, that's a big one. The second one is from the town of Clinton. We got kind of a really nice nod of approval and they agreed to the three thousand dollars that I asked. That was really meant to fund that first appraisal.
Yep.
And so that's been approved. And I think, you know, in some extent, it should be encouraging that the town council is unanimous. And their desire to pursue this. Um, so that's. Next step. Uh, Larry's and Mike have done a good job of, uh, tracking down two appraisers with Abby's help.
Yeah, we had, we received our praiser, um, his, uh, cost was three thousand for a yellow hook appraisal. And he has all the certifications and, uh, everything necessary to provide us with what we need for the grant application. He would be three thousand. In addition to that, we need someone there to then review his appraisal. Who has the appropriate licensing and certification. We found that individual, uh, his name is Rocco Porcina. The first one we were looking for, um, he had actually retired, so. Abby helped us get the name of Rocco Porcina. We, uh, spoke with him. He's going to, uh, do it. He has worked before with Frey, which is good. We wanted to make sure there's a working relationship. Between the praiser and the, uh, appraisal review individual. So, um, they, they're both on the same page as, as for what each needs in order to do their part of the job. Necessary to prepare what they have to prepare so that we can go with the grant. So both of them agreed, uh, Porcino was gonna charge two thousand dollars. He can do it within four to six weeks. I'm hoping to speed them up. And, but that's from when he receives the appraisal. And then, uh, our praiser is moving on now. He already received all the documents, uh, from Abby. He needs to go forward and we're hoping to get that back from him maybe within two weeks, so.
Okay.
Between praiser for three thousand and the reviewer for two, it's gonna cost us a total of five thousand. We almost have that coming down between the three thousand from the town and the twelve hundred, uh, from, uh, CLCC. That's forty two hundred or eight hundred, uh, you know, away from that goal. So, um, the bottom line is. We were originally trying to get the approval and the review done. Um. So that we could then proceed to talk with the owners of our fair market back. We have to know what the fair market value is that we're looking at, so.
Right.
Let's be practical. It looks like in order to have both of those reports done and in hand. So that we can meet, discuss it and then talk with the owners about what our fair market value position would be. It's probably gonna look like more like thirty to forty five days from this day. That's why I was, now, I haven't had that knock up the gas to three months that they gave us.
Yeah, I'm not sure actually when that time period started, right? It was a hundred and twenty day.
It was a hundred and twenty. Uh, I'm assuming it started sometime in November, early, uh, December. And we may or may not need to push for an additional annual extension from them. Um, but you can report at this stage that everything is underway. Um, we have, uh, retained the praiser and the reviewer of the praiser, uh, to proceed. Uh, and we have the knowledge to proceed.
Okay, let me, let me, let me.
We'll go back to them before the end of February.
So, and then the thing that I wanna make sure that we do is begin to transition away from you, Mark, no offense. But to Mike, uh, because the ultimate purchaser is gonna be the land trust.
Yep, okay. So let me recap real quick and make sure I got the right info here. So we, we got, we got a grant from CLCC. Approved, and that was for the pre acquisition costs. For, um. That's to pay most of the appraisers. But we also got three K ru- uh, from the town.
Right.
Um, and then by, by working with CLCC, it opens us up to expand with them. For the bigger amounts down the road. Um, and then the two appraisers are basically lined up. Uh, we only have, what would you say? We have, we only have a little more funding before we can kick them off?
Yeah, they don't need payment until they're done with their reports and that provided to us. Right now, you've got everything we need to move forward. All we have to do is sign, review and sign both of their contracts. Which we already did. We got their checks and we sent them to the president of the, uh, uh, Clinton Land Conservation Trust. She's signed, we'll send them back and we sent them off to them. And they're both contracts required. They can't start their work until they get the signed contract back. It's in their hands now.
Okay, and then basically. In four to six weeks, we'll have the appraisals, which then we'll be able to give the fair market value that we, that we promised.
Yeah, and hopefully it will be quicker. We're, we're.
Right. I would be on the safe side.
Yeah.
So I would say, say February, yeah, end of February, or we're shooting for end of February if we wanna have a conversation. You could even schedule it with your advice for February. And then the thing is though, is that the timing of the land trust is good.
Yeah. No, whereas once we get the appraisal, we have to have a, uh, discussion with the land trust board. As to, okay, this is fair market value. Do we agree with this? Right? Is this what we wanna talk about as first?
And that we, of course, we will meet on the fourth Tuesday of February, so I mean.
Which, which, which day is that?
Might work out with it. You know.
That's right.
See. February twenty seventh.
Oh, perfect. So if we're meeting on the twenty seventh, we can tell them what? We'll get back to them by the first week in March?
Yeah.
And I think that might be the end of that four month deadline.
Okay, yeah, I'll mention the, the deadline and how maybe we can just ask for a few more weeks. If nee- if needed. Something like that, okay.
Yeah, that's good.
You also submit the transaction grant to the state. It was also submitted, right? The state grant for the transaction costs, that's different than the CLCC, right? That's what Abby was working on?
Well, I think that's, we got the approval for, um, oh, for the state.
A state, that's a state action separate from. Yeah, not the acquisition law, right? That's also, that's also a twenty dollar.
CLCC is up to twenty thousand. I'll tell you one, Mike, why don't you call Abby tomorrow?
All right.
And be very private secret what we're doing as far as application state rate. Is she is sitting in there and that completely for us.
So is DLT Steve? Isn't Steve?
No, 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 it's a private organization. Of, it's like a conglomerate of organizations, conservation.
So, that could be the same thing.
Yeah, I thought that's the twenty thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Okay, and, and by the way, that leads into the last question is, uh, once we set a price and talk with them and we're free of a long price. Uh, maybe I'm jumping the gun. We gotta start in connection with them in relation to state grant. Having a, uh, environmental, uh, expert come in to do an environmental study. And Abby had a, uh, had a lead on it.
What she does is. We thought that could afford twenty thousand dollars.
No, they actually, yeah, actually, I think the projection was on a bypass, it was only, yeah.
So, so that's when we fix real.
So we got that, so we're gonna still see Steve funding our pre acquisition costs.
So, hey, Mark? So are you gonna send out, uh, before you send it to the clients, you're gonna send out that, what, your email?
Yep, I'll do it through email. And make sure you guys agree and. You know, we'll, we'll collaborate on it a little bit before I send it to them.
Yeah, you could, you, 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 we could edit it a little if we felt, you know, needed or whatever. Yeah, yeah.
Yep, absolutely. We'll, we'll get it squared away.
Yeah, okay, Dean.
Very good. Um, so CIP requests for contribution for like that.
I think we were asking the capital investment.
Oh, so we already put that in.
Yeah.
That's been done. Ten to fifty thousand, yeah. So that's in the budget. If we have capital plans, I have not, I mean, it's gonna go through the.
It's the first stage.
It's the first stage, it, you know. I guess, eventually, the town Clinton will hold on. But before then, you know, everybody's gotta approve that, um, but yeah, that. That funding, Abby filled out the paperwork, I submitted it. And so there's fifty thousand and we're looking for the town to play free.
Yeah.
So that has been done.
So we met that deadline. We couldn't even ask for the town to contribute it, uh, unless you.
Right.
This submission.
Right. Um, and so we've already done the praiser selection, so that's kinda where we are. Any other sort of loose ends for us? I think the next step in this process is Mark to send that email out, introduce Mike. And let them know where we are. I think it's important because they're doing us a solid for basically sort of keeping things on the, the. You know, off the market. It's always good to sort of stay in touch with them through the process. Let them know where we are. So, Mark, you're the next stage up. Uh, the other thing that I probably have to keep my eye on for the next month. Is that capital request, make sure it gets included in the budget. And if they need any more information. Oh, Mark, we were gonna talk, uh, if you could in your email. And if they need any more information, oh, Mark, we were gonna talk, uh, if you could in your email. Just ask for permission. For things like the appraisers, and I wanna take the town council members there. Um, there's just gonna be people on the land, and I want their approval for that permission.
Okay, got it, I took a note.
Right, or, or actually confirm their permission, I believe they previously indicated they would. That we could go on the property, but you wanna confirm on the permission, so that if the appraisers have to go back in on it.
Okay.
Yeah. Because uh, you know, several of the town councils actually wants to walk property, which I knew is all really. So the appraisers, town council, you know, it'd be an environmental study.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else we should talk about? Sort of thing, senior? I think once we get the appraisers. And then we can bring those, uh, the fair market values to, to land trust board. And at that point. Um, you know. Go for the land trust is. Then we have to do sellers for the, for the, for the market value. I think, you know. Has to be a fair market value thing, can't. You can't be, you know, you can't be any more than that.
Right, yeah.
Both, right. Well, once you have, you, when you apply for funding from T E P, yes, they can't, they won't.
They'll give you a percentage of the, upwards to the fair market value.
Correct.
If you, if you buy property beyond the fair market value. Then, the amount of grant funding is based on only the fair market value. So if there are ten applicants and they only have enough money to get forty percent of the total application. Out, they'll give us forty percent of the fair market value of our property. You know, the property we're looking, yeah, that's it, so that's our limit, so. Well, but once we get the approval from the land trust, that they're, they're in, and they're willing to purchase for that. But Mark, they're not gonna have to enter the contract with you. Cause one of the uh, one of the uh, requirements of grant is that we have some contract that they're going to uh. Wait and sell at price, and so, but that, but that's down the road, we're just talking down the road, it's uh.
Right.
Once fair market value is negotiated with them. Well, so, hopefully at that point, Mike is taking over, you know, so the word, the land trust is doing the negotiation. Yeah, so, that's good.
Yeah, because once, once we get the fair, once we get the appraisals, we really have to talk to the owner. About that price point, and, and come to a price point, right?
Yeah.
And then, and then the land trust takes over.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, you know, obviously, there's things you can offer to lower the price, things like naming rights or, you know, tax benefits and, you know. Abby will be able to help out there. Uh, but there's things that we could do to sort of bring this down a little bit from even where the appraisal value is. Um, hopefully, maybe when they can refuse.
Exactly.
You know, we can add the plant in zone, just keep down the property, don't play ball. I didn't say that, uh, this is a internal department.
Alright, so, so basically, I think we talked about the chronology then is, um, we get the appraisals in. Then we get CLCT's uh, determination of what they're willing to purchase as fair market value. Then we negotiate the contract with owners.
Yep.
Um, uh, then we uh, we're gonna have to hire an environmental expert to do the environmental study. And then with all of that, the contract, the environmental study, the uh, the fair market value evaluation. We then complete the grant application to be ready to submit by next fall.
So you have an environmental specialist in mind because.
Abby does.
Okay.
Um. Just one thing that, that might be on the horizon, just keep it in. If, you know, some of those expenses are pretty high, I'm gonna uh, exceed the twenty grand, the CLCC is, you know, maxed out at. Um, so with the three thousand, and we've already got sort of kind of looked at twenty three thousand range. Um, I might go back to the town council and see if I can rate the uh, open space acquisition funding. That we have, uh, for another few thousand, so.
Oh, we may be well within.
We may be well within, we'll see.
Um, eight thousand for environmental, um, five thousand for the two uh, appraisal.
Right.
Um, we already have the um, survey.
Yeah, the A one survey, according to Abby, is not adequate, so.
So we're gonna have to bolt through it, so that'll.
I don't know what that calls.
Okay, okay. So thirteen plus upgrading the A one survey that, I, I need the uh, the ser- uh, the uh. Survey that we have, the A one survey, um, and then uh.
There's some deed transactions.
Yeah, there's like uh. Highway insurance.
I don't think that's massive, no, thousand, eight thousand, yeah.
Yeah, and by the way, once you then complete grant application. Before, when we submit that to the state, during that process, what we also wanna do is then go out and start doing some. Uh, intensive fundraising, seeing if we get the war company, the country review, like we did last time. Seeing if we get other organizations to contribute.
Look, EverSource is right there, they're already sort of, we're gonna take advantage of their property, they take advantage of ours. Maybe a little scratch and, back, they've got like three thousand if they dedicate.
And by the way, it would help us with the grant application, in addition to fundraising, and indicating what other markets we can get. Um, to show community support in the grant. Um, we might even wanna work on right away with the uh, uh. EverSource, because if they're willing to give us a right of. To access all these other properties, so that we can have a huge amount of connection with all the other uh, properties. Um, that's another great reason in the grant for the state to give us, so we'll wanna work on that too.
Yeah, and I've got a lead on a federal. Unfortunately, there's a, a federal resource that does. That might be a possibility, so, so yeah, once we get this in calling. You know, you never know, it's, it's. Um, we're still there, but. First water.
Thousand thousand dollars.
Yes, but, uh, we're still getting at that file the other day. And there was this guy, and I kind of forgot about him, with like Newman Foundation. Uh, Paul Newman's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They satisfied Grant like out of the blue. And then, and then, I wanna say, another guy, Henry Ward. Henry Ward.
Henry Land.
I'm so happy to see, think that, that, that they're purchasing, so finally, they're purchasing open space. You know, thank you very much, you know.
Really, who's that?
So, 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 well, once we have a signed agreement from the owners. I think we can either go public with it, or get into the shoreline news. Yeah, no, Henry Lord. But we can get into the press and start making a bigger deal of it, I don't wanna do that, because that might galvanize the owners beforehand, so.
Ah, okay.
And by the way.
Need to address.
Sally and Adam just indicated that Wild and Sea Film Festival, which holds a lot of environmental people into this town. It's gonna be on May fourth, imagine you wanna have a little uh, a booth or something right now. Where they have a wine and cheese at in commission, um, and maybe we could get contributions there.
Sure.
Or, or, or add some additional stores.
Yeah, absolutely. Right, there, we have a dome tank, you know.
He's the chair, what's up for public land? What it says here, wow, wow. So.
So those things, we gotta come up with a, we can do that, it would hurt to send them whether now or not. This involves billions of dollars to project.
Yeah.
Anyway, so there's a lot that could be done, and should be done, but next step, then. We just have to execute up to this point, get a lot of, get the, the. The owners on board and fit the appraisals in and get a price that's. Applicable to the owners and applicable to us.
By the way, most, these potential good charities you gave last time, they're sizable ones. Maybe the land trust should consider giving them a honorary uh, ticket to the uh, Wild and Sea Film Festival.
Uh, you can see them and talk, draw a home with them, right? I think it's great, uh, okay, we'll see, alright, um.
Can I just ask you, um, does the current order already have the, these are the power company and the owner side of the company?
No, we don't, they have given an easement to the power company.
For them to use the roadway in to get to their road.
Ah.
So the first part of the roadway is from the road, the first part of the, the, the dirt road from the road.
Yeah.
Is, is the road on our, on this front, maybe more than that.
Oh, okay.
And that's where we have some area and we put some parking, and then it leads into EverSource's uh, road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just wondering about that, if that's transferable.
So if we have a right way that they're using. So in right way, should give us some right ways to have.
Well, and, and they've been really good about it, I mean, they, they indicated that they have no problem, people want.
Really?
Yeah, so, so I think all in all, this should be really, really. No, if you look at, there's a park in, in uh. And for, you know, there's, I know there's trails where you actually cross.
Yeah.
You're lying, lying on those, so you need to point me that before.
So when, when we hit EverSource up for contribution, it could be a contribution or right of ways or a combination.
Both, well, I'm trying to, oh, yeah. Alright, alright, um, anyway, so that, I think that sort of concludes discussions. Um. So, can I get a motion for adjournment of the land acquisition subcommittee? And that we adjourn, okay, so that's Larry, second.
Alright, sorry, good.
And, and Mark, you were late.
I was, it was, it was a delay.
Why, hold on, hold on, you're gonna have your, you're gonna have your opportunity later, so all in favor of the subcommittee adjourned?
Alright.
Alright, all opposed? Perfect, so, the subcommittee is now adjourned. Now we have the opportunity to adjourn the, uh, the Conservation Commission. Mark, can I get a, a motion from you?
I motion to adjourn. The whole thing.
Larry, seconds, sorry, discussion? Alright, all in favor of the adjournment of the Conservation Commission? All opposed? Very unanimous, wait.
Good job, Mark, you're.
Hold on, alright.
Well, that's been last week, that's been like ten minutes shorter.